Does the mayor saying start? Who said start?
No, no, I can get started.
Oh. Ready when you are.
No, it's two pages.
The two meetings.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the County Council to order today is January 9th, 2024. This is our first meeting for the new year. And it's 7:04 PM with the clerk caller rules, please.
Uh, Councilman Rafai.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Present.
Councilman Sedman.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes, sir.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
And Mr. Mayor, you're here. We have a forum.
Thank you.
And we also have new speakers in the room.
I know, yes. Right for the president of the day, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, and our God, in the name of our representative, our justice, our law, and our liberty.
Okay. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to propose Abu Musa will be the next mayor program.
Second. That to the new business?
Yeah. I think we propose a new name should be the under new business. Addition, deletion not going to be maybe there. What do you think?
So that will be E.
Yeah. If the addition.
Yeah, I think we probably.
Oh, no.
Addition, deletion.
Yeah, we have to do the new business.
You can do it that way.
Yeah. Because there is no addition and deletion. Under new business, we're gonna appoint. There is the resolution.
Because the item will be up.
Yeah, that was the resolution.
As soon as the item comes up, you can make that motion, second it.
The only reason I did it the other way because it's not a completed resolution right now posted. It's a, I don't have a resolution posted. So it's in order for it to be into new business, they have to create it. But you do it however you want to do it.
We can do it when the new business comes up.
Doesn't really matter. It's only one item.
You can make the same motion. And anybody else who's gonna make a motion at that time can make their motion. When the business comes up.
It's gonna be right here.
All right. So other nominees will go under this resolution as well or they're created?
New.
New one.
Yeah.
Under new business.
Then we'll start.
Any other nominees can be.
Or he can do, he has to do new again.
He has to do it again.
Yes.
Once it's up and we're in new business and we're talking about it, someone make a motion to, for that.
He did it already, so do it.
It's not that complicated. We're already in the middle of it.
Well, we have to get through public comment.
Just do it the way it's on the agenda.
All right. So it's added to the new business. And now we move to the public comment.
Did we add the nomination or that's scratched out now?
Mayor, your preference to add it all together into new business or just deal with it under the current resolution?
Well, we have one nominee now, one nomination. So others can add it while we discuss them.
Well, no, but once there's a nomination and a second, you guys have to discuss and vote. Do you want to scratch it and?
Yeah, so, so we can, we can either, so since we're under additions, deletions, we can continue to add a whole nother resolution to new business for that exact thing. Because we could do that. Or we could scratch and vote on it. Or we could scratch that altogether and wait till we get into the new business resolution A 2401 and then propose it under that, exactly what he, what he did.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Why not right now, see what goes to get on there, get them down on the list until we get to the business?
And then we can. That's what you guys want to do.
We're standing.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's our, that's, so we can do multiple nominations.
This is exactly how.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate.
Nope.
Well, there's one of the.
There's a writing on the table. There's a writing of nomination.
Colin said, I mean, to make a list or?
I'm saying, why not make a list? So until we come to the new business.
That's not how, that's not how the motion works. That's not a motion.
Because we cannot take the vote. It's not in the, it's not in the new resolution yet. Before that, we have the public comment.
Either way, once we get to new business.
Then we start all over.
We could, it would start all over.
Yes, that is the rule.
And, um, and so right now in spending any more time in additions and deletions, we're, we're gonna just redo this once we get to new business.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So once new business happens.
Second nominee.
You can redo the same motion. In fact, you'll have to, um, to have the same effect. And anybody else can do the same thing at that time. But once the motion is up, that's when the vote takes.
So then he has to motion to remove it.
Cause he did motion.
Cause we already have a second.
It's there. So I mean, you got a first and a second. So yes, technically you have to vote on it now.
No, but he can just motion to remove it and scratch it off.
I want to remove the motion I have of Abu Musa.
I just want to motion it.
And now I have to do business. I'll remove it and I'll do the business.
Okay. Now when new business comes up, resolution A.
Don't let me go there. No, you have to do it again. So he will do it.
So everyone is in favor of removing it, right?
Uh, yes.
Well, it's not that way. The person who motions or seconds can remove it.
Yeah, and it's done.
Okay. All right. So no addition and deletion.
No.
So public comment if you're interested in moving forward.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Great encouragement.
Mayor and Council, first of all, I would like to congratulate the newly elected officials. And I just have a short message.
Can you push your mic, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the set, on Sunday's inauguration, we have filmed the event and a movie has been produced. It will be posted tomorrow for anyone to see. It's only 54 minutes long, pretty much on schedule as we discussed it with the city manager. So I invite anyone who wants to see or your friends to go into the Hamtramck TV, Hamtramck Public TV to watch it or to the Hamtramck Library, the media section. And it will be available for everyone. Thank you.
That's very, thank you.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
All right. So is it, is it two meetings today?
Yes.
So the public gets to speak twice in the first meeting.
You'll talk every public comment if you want.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that I've probably lived through more organizational meetings than anybody in this room. And I know how they work. And I know how the politics are of this process. There's a political manipulation that can go on during this process. It's the first one who could say name up, gets voted on first, sometimes a second name gets it. Some people know how to work the system. So just know if you'd be aware of this, this has been a very political process. So I hope you do it the right way today. And obviously you don't know how to do it because you all just more or less try to figure what to do. There's a way, I think we are, are, uh, what's the word? Constitution or Charter. I think our charter outlines exactly how to do this process. So that might have been good to look at, but anyways, in the meantime, that's all I want to say is I was talking about second meeting. Thank you for the sound. It's improved quite a bit. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meyer. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So we move now to the new business. And we have first.
Mr. Chair.
Well, let me read the first resolution we have.
Mr. Chair. It's all has to be new again, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mohit Mahmood.
I, I have to start reading the first resolution first.
Okay.
Yeah. So resolution 2024, one, uh, zero, one, election of Mayor Proton for 2024, 2025.
Motion? Second.
All right. Discussion now?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Now we're gonna go discussion or we can offer it? It should be offered now. It's not the discussion. Mr. Chair. I'd like to move it here. Okay, right? Somebody did it first.
Please Hassan has the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
It's our opinion that you could move ahead with the offering now and the mayor would call as you go.
Mr. Chair, so I'd like to nominate Councilman Mohit Mahmood as a mayor pro temp under this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, on the same note, I'd like to nominate Mr. Abu.
No, you have a second. I need to have a second.
You need a second.
Oh, you need a second too?
Yeah. Second.
So?
Can discuss?
Yeah, thank you.
So I'd like to nominate.
No.
Not yet.
They gotta discuss this one? Or vote?
Mr. Chair, since we, I wanna speak little bit. As a former mayor pro temp, uh, this is the position only one as a mayor pro temp. We are six council members and it is nothing more important than the council members. Yes, you do some importantness. And we can, six of, cannot be the mayor pro temp. It will be the one mayor pro temp. So we all together today and, and peacefully and, and honestly, we're gonna make the mayor pro temp today. And who, whomever will be the mayor pro temp, I will gonna have a respect. And, and I still gonna be happy to work with the, as a councilman together. So this is the mentality we should have all of them. So that's why I'm saying, thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussions?
No, sir. Do we go ahead and vote?
Yeah.
Councilman Musa.
No.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, no.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai. Councilman Sedman.
No.
Mr. Mayor. No, actually, Mr. Mayor.
Tie?
So it's a tie?
The mayor, you can choose to break the tie.
Okay, I choose not to vote until.
We will, we'll have to re-vote then. Keep re-voting.
Yeah, go to the next one, the next one.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose Mr. Hassan to be a mayor pro temp as well.
Second.
All right, I guess we can probably go ahead and vote.
One on, please. Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
No.
Councilman Sedman.
No.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
No.
Councilor, two resolution again, suspend the law.
Suspend the law.
Suspend it.
Are you ready?
No, no.
No, we're not.
Supposed to be.
We're gonna reopen there.
We open the meeting.
Yes.
No, not yet. Can we open the meeting?
He can propose somebody?
We still gotta disclose the first two names.
All right. So per recommendation of our city attorney, we, uh, and after doing some research that I have to vote on each one. So we will have to bring the motion back on the table.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to bring back resolution pointing Mohit Mahmood as mayor pro temp, please. I'll second.
We're doing it over?
We're doing the original back that the mayor had.
The first one.
We don't have to do it over. We're just.
So we're gonna help you.
We're not doing it over.
They're taking a vote.
He just has to vote.
For the mayor's vote.
Okay, thank you.
So we voted on, um, him.
Yeah, Councilman Mahmoud. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I just wanna clarify my vote that instead of abstaining from voting, because I have to be neutral. That you guys have to work as a team and solve this problem. This is a costly vote. This is a personal issue. If it was something, you know, related to the community or the city, I would break the vote. I don't care because I believe in my opinion. This is personal. So I don't wanna hurt anybody here. So you guys have to work as a team and solve this problem. I respect you all on the same level. And I don't want this vote to cost me, uh, you know, some personal bravery or animosity in the future. So I'll vote no to everybody.
Oh, right now, one by one.
Yeah, so I'll say no for now.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, your motion for Khalil nominating Councilman Mahmoud fails.
And now we make a motion for the second.
Mr. Chair. I want to reopen the resolution, uh, choosing Mohammed Hassan as mayor pro temp.
Section?
Second, ladies. It is, you don't have to, you have to vote on it.
Actually, I just have to put my votes, right?
Yes.
The only motion we need is for the third person.
Yeah.
So I will vote no as well.
Now it's.
So, hold on. I have to announce, Mr. Mayor, motion to appoint Councilman Hassan as pro temp fails four to three.
So now I propose, uh.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. I propose, Mr. Chair, uh, I propose Abu Musa for the next mayor pro temp.
Second.
And now we take a vote.
Everything now that know.
Or, or the floor is back over for discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comment, but things is like, it should not be hard feeling. And everything, your doubt is to be a red flag. If you have moves, you have to. I mean, personally, my, on my side, I says there's no hard feeling. You know, I hope you're the leader even made the right decision and we all expect you. I mean, if you take things personally, then we don't have leadership. You are here to lead our community. And if you take things personally, then that's not supposed to be, that's how it's supposed to be.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But I appreciate, thank you.
That, that's how everyone should be thinking. So I appreciate that. But, uh.
Now is the resolution on the floor.
Yeah, so we have any further discussion or we can go ahead and vote? No, just keep the vote. That's it.
No.
No discussion.
Sorry, may I give this a word?
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
So I.
Nomination for Abu Musa approved.
Uh, I, I said I would say no to this one.
No, you don't have to vote on this one.
You don't have to.
Yeah, it passed already.
Unless you wanna vote, it's up to you.
No.
Okay, so approved, uh, one, two, three, four to two.
Congratulations.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. I was gonna ask him to quit from my.
Hassan.
Congratulations.
So what is the next one?
That's it. I'm just waiting for the congratulations to.
Oh, okay.
I have to stay a little bit.
It's up to you. What are you gonna do?
So we got it solved in the first meeting. I was thinking that we may have to go on anything to solve this, but, um, I mean, thank you, everyone, for being responsible to take care of this without getting me in trouble.
You do good there.
Thank you. Well, we move now back to the public comment.
Did you want to speak at this one, sir? Mr. Bill Meyer?
So I guess I was right. That was a sort of like a charade. I, I'm totally amazed and respecting of the mayor's ability to bring together people and to take that position. That was the right position you took to not vote this way. There's six people. They're supposed to decide. And if they can't come up with four for one person, that's their problem, not the mayor has to split the vote. If you can't all agree on one person for votes, which you did, so that's the right way to do it. The mayor shouldn't have been involved in this one. And I commend you on your wise choice, which you've done many times in this city, and I'll talk about that later. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
All right. Thank you. And we come to adjournment at this time for the organizational meeting. And we will move to the.
I need a motion.
Motion?
A second.
All right. It's 7:30. All things, right?
All right.
All right. Okay, so we will start our regular city council meeting after we were done with the organizational meeting. And again, today is January 9th, 2024. It's 7:32 PM with the clerk caller rules, please.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Present.
And let me say that one more time, Proton Musa. Congratulations to Mr. Mayor. You're here. We have a forum.
Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of thank yous. I'd like to thank Greg and the library staff and our staff for organizing the inauguration this past Sunday. I think it went quite well. Uh, in addition, I'd also like to again thank Greg and Mr. Bill Meyer for taking their time to come in to council chambers along with some of our staff and work on the speaker systems, which I think is working a heck of a lot better.
So prove it.
And of course, mine's not up.
There you go.
But if you talk loud enough, so hopefully everyone heard me anyway.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thank you. All right. No more community announcement?
No, sir.
All right. We move to proclamation, recognition and presentation. And we have the police department annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Do you have the report you can pull up or? So we did prepare, um, the annual report for 2023. And I can tell you that. Should have come to in any email.
Okay, just a second.
Yeah, so, um, in.
Got it.
2023, the police department handled 16,259 calls for service. As far as arrests go, there was total of 512 arrests, which broke down to 196 felony arrests and 387 misdemeanor arrests. I'm happy to report that our robberies were down by 27%. Our burglaries were down by 21%. Fraudulent crimes were down by 12%. Drug crimes down by 17%. Our alcohol crimes are down by 42%. And our homicides were down by 100%. We did not have a homicide in 2023. So I'm very happy to report that. However, on that flip side, some of our other violent crimes are up 5%. Retail fraud was up 60%, which is quite high for, um, that crime. Our property crime is 13%. And we have been seeing an increase in stolen vehicles. But this is consistent with our national statistics and the statistics that we're finding around Michigan of stolen vehicles. So it's a good time to remind everyone that anything that you can do to prevent stolen vehicle theft, such as getting the club, kill switches, alarms, those kind of things. Nothing is foolproof, but anything you can do to slow someone down or get them to maybe move out of our community. We're also hoping that the newly approved flock cameras will help this type of thing. Because a lot of times we're seeing that someone will bring a stolen car into the city in order to steal another vehicle. So we're hoping that that will help. As far as traffic citations, um, they wrote 7,136 traffic citations, which broke down to 6,815 civil infractions. And for speeding citations, there was 1,236 of those were speeding citations. They wrote 1,049 misdemeanor traffic citations, 50 reckless driving or dangerous driving, and 3,051 parking related, which were non-meter tickets. So those would be your blocked driveways, your handicap, fire hydrants, um, those types of, um, parking tickets as well. Um, the Hamtramck Police Department had the following, following employee changes. We did hire five new police officers and five new civilians were hired. Those would be our dispatchers and other support staff in the police department. We did have four resignations, which included officers and a combination of support staff. And we did have one promotion. Some additional highlights, the Hamtramck Police Department has participated in several community events, which included but not limited to the Hamtramck Drug Free Coalition meetings, a back to school carnival, the Labor Day Festival, the Labor Day Parade, prescription drug takeback, the health hike. We hosted a vehicle auction. Uh, the Hamtramck Drug Free Coalition does a public safety breakfast every year. Our officers participated in the annual canine training event. We hosted our second annual trunk or treat and DCFC games that the officers attended. And we also had several officers from the police department visit several police academies and job fairs to increase, increase our recruiting efforts. And you can see in the photographs, um, one of the photographs was from one of the events that we hosted. And the second below picture was Officer Gruffey at a job fair that she attended. Myself, the police chief was featured on WXYZ's check-in with the chief, which we had a very good community conversation about the police department and our involvement in the community. We continue to make, um, training a priority. Our staff members are completing multiple monthly trainings. And the classes include a wide variety of topics. Officers are approved to submit additional training requests for a wide variety of training topics. And we also completed active shooter training. Um, I worked with our grant coordinator and we were awarded an $800,000 training grant for the Department of Justice. The police department has partnered with Eastern Michigan University to create a de-escalation training program using a virtual reality technology. Next slide. So some of the photographs you can see, um, we have the officers attending a reading event at one of the schools. Um, there's a photo, a couple of photos there from the Channel 7 broadcast that I participated in. We had an officer with our trunk or treat event. And the two photographs at the bottom were from the back to school carnival at the Pulaski Park. The next slide, we also have officers continuing to read to the schools. Uh, the middle photograph was taken at the Hamtramck Housing Office, where they hosted a separate back to school event for those, um, community members. There was the Sarah Garrett Park dedication. Uh, you can see myself and the fire chief with Representative Iash at the nine, 9/11 ceremony that they hosted at the state capitol. And there's just some other photos of other events that we attended. And that's pretty much it from the police department.
Thank you. So like you mentioned, the most pressing issue now in the community is stolen cars. I mean, uh, just in the past two days, many people reach out to me and complaining about this, uh, increase in stolen cars. And they are telling us that we are not doing anything. But I told them that we are doing everything possible, including approving the cameras, you know, to be installed around the city. But from your, uh, viewpoint, what else can be done? And what is the police department doing to prevent this or?
Like I said, anything that a, um, community member can do to, uh, to protect themselves and their vehicle, such as, like I said, the club, those are still very effective in my opinion. And a lot of times someone doesn't wanna mess with that. They'll move on to the next vehicle. It's not foolproof. It never is. I mean, there are instances where someone can cut that device off or cut the steering wheel. Kill switches can be installed, alarm systems, watching out for your neighbors, reporting suspicious activity. I mean, I would rather have our officers go out on something suspicious rather than someone say, oh, I saw something, but I didn't call it in. So those kind of things. Our officers are out there. Our officers are out there patrolling and watching for suspicious behavior. But as you know, in the police department, we have to find a very fine balance between just what could be considered harassing a person that's walking down the street and watching out for criminal activity. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything to protect the rights of our residents and visitors to this community, but at the same time, watching out for suspicious behavior. And, you know, we can certainly check out those type of things, especially in the middle of the night, you know, when it starts getting cold, it's kind of unusual to typically see people just kind of walking around pulling on corridors. We get, we see a lot of that on social media, but nobody ever calls. So if you see someone pulling on someone's corridor and looking in the vehicles, things like that, we definitely want people to report those type of events.
So since this is like, it's a common problem, not only in Hamtramck, but all this way. You know, one of our employees, in her car was stolen, but she wasn't able to coordinate with the dealer to find the location using some kind of navigation system of the car. You know, unfortunately, it wasn't stolen from Hamtramck, but from the border of Hamtramck, six mile. So she kept telling Detroit Police, this is where the car is. Because the GPS, whatever system they are using, located where the car is, but the police was telling her, this is not a priority for us, we can't, we can't go to this place. That's, that's a major problem. I even talked to Max about it because this could solve a lot of problems if we, if we catch those people somewhere, maybe they are the ones who are doing it everywhere. It could be a group, it could be some place where they, you know, hide the cars and then, I don't know, sell it, whatever they do with them. But Detroit Police refused to cooperate in that. I talked to Max, he said, if it was stolen from Hamtramck, we would have done something. Is there a way we can coordinate with Detroit Police to do, you know? Because this could have solved a lot of problems if we catch the criminals who are doing it.
Right, so our detectives do work very closely with Detroit Police Department detectives. I unfortunately can't speak to what happens on their road patrol and on a daily basis with the supervisors and stuff. Obviously, we know Detroit is very busy and they do have to prioritize their calls. I mean, it's fortunate about Hamtramck, even though we tend to be busy at times, that we don't start our shift fifteen, twenty, thirty calls in the hole like unfortunately Detroit sometimes does. So it is a little frustrating. You know, our officers, if it's something that's kind of found on the border, our officers probably could kind of slide that way a little bit, and you know, if it's a car that was stolen from Hamtramck, help the vehicle owner recover it. Certainly someone is, is able to recover their own vehicle. However, I don't condone going into a situation where they don't feel comfortable in doing that themselves, but so yes, it can be frustrating too. But we do work closely with Detroit, and I can certainly have someone reach out to see if that's, you know, something we can make sure that they're making a priority. I know that they do have an auto theft unit, so maybe that's kind of something is making sure that we're coordinating our office with them.
Thank you. Any other question?
Mayor, that's a good question. Do you need what is called a tentative date for a camera installment? I know it's called with an hour, but.
So we, I reached out to them today because of the holidays, everybody was busy, so we are getting ready to do our next kickoff meeting. We did sign the agreement with them. We've sent the invoice up for processing for the first installment, which is what is required by them to install the cameras that we pay half of the money upfront. So we have done that, so we are taking good steps. We've already had a meeting where I've approved every location that we've discussed with them. So we're taking steps, it's just a matter of not kind of in their hands to decide when they start getting. And they have to get, part of that process involves getting permits for certain locations if they're on county right of ways, they have to work with Wayne County. So they're, they said that could take a couple of months in order to get Wayne County to approve. Same thing with M dot, anything that's on the M dot right away. John sat in on a meeting with us and we did talk about the locations that are in Hamtramck on our poles, that we could, you know, move the process along for them. So we're taking the steps in the right direction.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, one other quick question, mayor. All right, I got added to the for classroom. I know you gave the ticket citation numbers for this year, but not the previous year. It is the speeding ticket.
Yeah, these are for two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, these are all for two thousand twenty-three.
It's like everything is.
That was a management's report.
Yeah, we had a report last. Oh, okay. Yeah, no, no, she compared everything else. Last year.
Those should be out on board docs if you look at last year's annual report that we got. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
I see. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we move on to the additions or deletions. Do we have any?
No, sir.
All right, and move back to public comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, doesn't anybody else want to talk? Can you hear, we can hear you much better, though. All your mics are working great. If you can make sure you're talking to the mics. We got new speakers back there, the public can hear you. But we can't hear this mic, those, this mic's not coming out of those two speakers, but you can hear this over there.
Yeah, very clear.
See, there's that little.
One more to fix. Yeah, we're right on the edge of feedback. All right, so Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to our new councilman. Is that part of the meeting? Are you supposed to say welcome to him and all that? Oh, we're gonna do that later, right? In the meantime, Mudus and Sadramad is bringing youth and energy to this council. I'm very excited about you being part of this. I read your cards that you passed out during your campaigning, and I kept one of them, and I saw all the things you promised to do. So I'm going to be marking off when you do. Thank you very much for your work. You might be the first one to do what you promised. Okay, well, it's hard to do. So the inauguration was very nice, and I appreciated the mayor's State of the City address that was short and positive sounding, instead of having a separate meeting for the State of the City address where you have to talk like an hour and try to make something vague about it. But the city's budget isn't the black for the first time in a long, long time. We have the largest grants we ever received. I think we're starting out the year in a really great position. So if you can all continue to work well together, and the staff here is amazing and everybody's working together, and I feel very positive about the city. I wish more people would come down here and talk. I mean, I know what happened to everybody, but. Cool, well, that's not me, I'm old, so. But anyways, the bike trail, and I read the pamphlet you put together for this program, it's very impressive pamphlet and apps and everything, and it's very good, and I like, appreciate the work that it done on it, but it's got the things in it. One was it, it was referenced to South Joseph Campbell, which I'm sure you don't mean south, there is no South Joseph Campbell. You meant south of Joseph Campbell, or the south end and the north end, I finally figured it out. So I heard there's great ideas for the north end of Joseph Campbell, north of Camvee. I'm very excited about that, that's in the plans, but the bike trail is a disaster. I mean, this bike trail really ruined the city. And somebody got sold a bill of goods, just like the parking meters. And you're trying everything you can to fix this. It's very hard to fix without losing money or having that a lot of parking spaces. So we're putting a, you have a park in that space where the people are parking now, so it's going to put pressure on us now that we're going to take away ten parking spots when we put that park in there. It's going to be even tougher. I like the ideas that you've compromised to go down whole book and stuff. Can I ask for ten more seconds? One more minute? Okay. So I think that the bike trail, you should really research how many people are using that thing. I saw, I haven't seen more than four people ride a bicycle on that thing in the last year. It's probably more, but if you put a camera up there and count them, I think we'll find out that this is a total waste of money. Our city is not prepared for that, so maybe Detroit is, or maybe some other areas, and we'll have to see how much business it brings, but I'm not happy to. Does that, was that include my extra minute?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then let me, as long as everyone can hear everybody when they're speaking, that's, that's what the good goal is here. I appreciate the two young men who are on staff now, that came Brandon, I forgot the other guys. Anthony, two good guys that are going to help the city a lot too, just like everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No one else?
Chief Anne.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I wanted to take this opportunity to update the community. After a long and rewarding career with the Hamtramck Police Department, I have decided to retire. This is my. This will be my last council meeting, and I will be leaving at the end of this month. My husband retired almost four years ago, and it's time for me to join him and so we can do some traveling and some other things. I have been the chief of police for almost nine years, having been appointed in March of two thousand fifteen. I do want to thank the city and the community for allowing me to serve as their chief. People who know me know that I don't normally talk about myself, I don't usually brag about myself, but I do want to point out some highlights from my career. I was hired in January of nineteen ninety-nine and was sponsored in the police academy by the city of Hamtramck. I spent several years working on patrol, both on afternoons and midnights. I was a training officer and the city's hostage negotiator. In two thousand and nine, I became the first female command officer in Hamtramck's history when I was promoted to sergeant. In two thousand and eleven, I was promoted to lieutenant and put in charge of the patrol division. And in March of two thousand and fifteen, I was named chief of police, becoming the first female chief in Hamtramck's hundred-year history. As chief, I've been involved in a lot of community engagement activities. I have implemented an online training program for our officers. I have significantly increased the diversity in the police department. I have applied for and received over two million dollars in grants for police equipment. In two thousand twenty-two, I was named Officer of the Year by my department and Hamtramck Community Initiative. In July of two thousand twenty-three, I was featured on WXYZ's Check-In with the Chief. I have brought several items of technology and upgrades to the police department, which I think really benefits the community. But I've had a very rewarding career, and I am grateful for the opportunities that the city has provided me and you have allowed me to serve as your chief. And I will miss everyone, and I wish the city great success.
And that's all for public comment.
Thank you, Chief Anne Moise. We appreciate your service for the community. We should have prepared for a farewell party for you here that we had knew before. But thank you so much for your service, and we will, we and the whole community will miss you. And hopefully, we can come up with a plan to, you know, appoint the chief of police in a smooth process and fair, you know, fair and equal opportunity for all. Thank you so much. So we're done with the public comments, and we move to the consent agenda. And this is a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, regular city council meeting, approval of invoice register date ending January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending January eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
All in favor?
All right.
So now we move to the new businesses. We have first resolution, two thousand twenty-four, that you are two approving McKenna contract.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor? So I'll start this out, and I also have, of course, John and Amir to quarterback this as well. We've been working on this contract for a number of months, going back and forth, negotiating, going back and forth, negotiating with McKenna and trying to explore what the best options are for the city. Over the time and prior to that, we've spoken with many of you here as well. And the overwhelming opinion that I got from council over the time was that they wanted to see a lot of the jobs come back into City Hall rather being, rather than being dependent upon an outside contractor. I agree with that because frankly, I believe that we can provide better service than any outside contractor can, not that I'm saying McKenna has done necessarily bad for us by all means, but I think that our own people, for a better cost, give better service. And we have significantly scaled back the McKenna contract here to the tune of what we believe we're going to be saving around three hundred thousand dollars from that contract, in addition to having our own people fill the slot. It is our hope that we approve this and move forward. It's going from basically McKenna running our full building department, all the way from the clerks to the final inspection, to simply now providing us one clerk and just the trade inspections, which is simply the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. And the reason for that is that we don't need full-time people for that, and we would actually have to share that service with another city. So for the time being, it seems to suit the city the best to institute this plan and see where it goes from here. We anticipate it to work good and then maybe even scale it back even more on the next round. So we propose a one-year contract at this time with two options to renew for a year as well.
Okay. Mr. Chair? As we now change into in-house, are we planning to hire people now and level the department? Or are we using the same people we have now?
So we've taken some additional steps as well to cross over our code enforcement with our building. And we have changed some staffing, and we're also sharing some of the services internally. We have hired a couple of people internally to do just that already, so we've already picked up some of those tasks. And our DPS Director, John, is also going to be picking up the mantle of building official, which essentially for us just needs to be a part-time position. It's more of a figurehead, figurehead position than anything. I mean, he will have to dedicate some hours a week to it, but there's not a need for a full hundred and twenty thousand dollar employee just for that position anymore. So we are trying to be as efficient as possible and also increase our work product.
Okay. Previously, was the DPS Director in the building, you know, director, was it one person?
So DPS years ago, I think, had some crossover. But the problem with that is not every department had, can do that. I mean, building official takes a lot of extra schooling qualifications that we're fortunate enough that Mr. D'Angelo's already has. So we're taking advantage of that situation, but usually that's in itself a position that takes years of schooling to even attain. We're lucky to have, like I said, John, to be able to do both DPS and that, and we're actually saving a significant amount of money by doing it that way.
That's it. All right, any further discussion? John, you want to say something about that?
Well, with the, with the, like Max already said, combining some of the workforce that we already have, you don't have to be a licensed inspector to do rental inspections. We have a code department sitting there just looking at garbage cans and lawn grass and things like that. And it's my goal to train them to where, and they've already started, to start being able to do some of the rental inspections themselves. So we have a little bit of crossover with existing employees already. And we only need one building inspector, because now I can dedicate, the building inspector used to do a little bit of rental, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. With code taking up some of the rentals, now we have a dedicated building inspector concentrate on the building departments per se itself, which is really good. Plus, paying the McKenna prices or subcontractor agreement on doing rental inspections is crazy because you don't need those licenses and certifications to do that. So when I looked at the department and where the money was going and allocation how it was going, it just made more sense to bring it all in. And it was at one time under DPS anyways, so it just made sense to do it.
We believe it's going to be a lot more efficient.
All right, we hope so, and because we have so many, I mean, we heard over the past couple of years, so many complaints about building department and taking into consideration that houses in Hamtramck are very old, over a hundred years old, and sometimes the demands can be a little bit difficult to renovate or update the house or building with old, you know, just like it was built recently. And people believe there was some conflict of interest because seventy-five percent would go to the, to McKenna, I believe, and only twenty-five percent for the city. So the community believed that people were going too hard on the.
That's one nice thing about having the building inspector here and the building official in-house, because we can look at everything like a cycle. A lot of communities I've been with, they'll say, you know, we're really going to concentrate on roofs, but you don't want to go to a homeowner and tag the roof and tag a bunch of cement work or tag their windows and a roof. You try to work with the community in what is realistic and what's common sense, instead of trying to basically force somebody to put tons of money in their house all at one time. We can have a better program so the community can be aware of it. And then the other advantage with not doing the mechanical, the plumbing, and the electrical is those fees are not a. is those fees are not assessed based on the cost of the job. They're a flat fee. So it's the least profitable item, not profitable, I'd say the least revenue collection point is the trade inspections because all the fees are associated to the building side of the permit and the rental side of the permit, you know, of doing rental inspections. So for an example, out of an $800,000 revenue, about $112,000, it was the mechanicals. So it had the least amount of revenue coming from that to sustain doing the department in-house. So that's why keeping the rentals in-house and keeping the building inspector in-house, the majority of the revenue would stay in-house.
We listen to your guys' concerns and the community's concerns, and we're trying to take appropriate measures.
Thank you. We can go ahead and vote on it.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-02 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next one is resolution 2024-03, approval to public, to publish notice of intent to issue revenue bond.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor, this is also a kind of a collaborative collaboration effort. I have our controller here today. I believe we also have a parent representative, if I'm not mistaken, in regards to this. This is specifically dealing with the Goodson project in its entirety of the large sewer main going across to, it's the whole tear out that we've been talking about for a while. This is our backup plan, but I'll let Amir explain about it.
Yeah, okay. So let's first talk about what the project is. It's basically a project where we are replacing sewer and, you know, we are connecting it. And along with that, there is a sewer televising and cleaning portion of it. So these two items total about 11.5 million. In addition to that, there is another 12 million, ah, 2 million of goods and water main that we are going to replace, for which we already have a grant in place. So the 11.5 million, we need to, you know, fund it through a revenue bond. And in order to go through and get that revenue bond going, the first step in that is to issue this notice of intent. On the other hand, we have already applied for FEMA grant for this particular project as well. That grant has not officially been communicated to us, even though on their website, it says that, you know, it has been approved and all that. So we are still waiting for that formal approval and communication from them. If that grant comes in, then obviously, we will not be utilizing the revenue bond, and we will stop, you know, all the process wherever we are. But we don't, because this is a very critical project, so we don't want to, you know, just rely on the FEMA grant to pay for it. In case the FEMA grant doesn't come through, we need to have, you know, a revenue bond pay for it. So that's the whole concept behind this.
And a little more, I have a little more backdrop on this. This is basically the Phase 1B of the Sewer Relief Program, that whole $60 million project that we eventually have to do and get done anyways. The timing of this doesn't afford us to just sit here and wait for FEMA project. So it mainly was a timing issue to apply for the bonds. We're still waiting for FEMA. And basically, what this section of the project will do, it'll alleviate just north of Holbrook, the south side of the city, for sewage going into people's basements. So basically, the south side of the city, it's going to alleviate a lot of that sewer backup situation. That's what this part of the phase will do. It'll also help up some of Joseph Compo going north on Joseph Compo Waterway.
And the timing is critical because there is a certain timeline that we can, we have to follow with Eagle for applying for a revenue bond for this year. So if we miss this timeline, we will then have to wait a whole year to, you know, apply for this revenue bond again. So for, for that process, today was the day to submit the application to Eagle, which we have submitted also. And so noticement 10 is the first step in that whole process.
Mr. Chair? I know previously, before you came, and also John, and also Max, Kathy was still here, we did come with a plan that our water service, you know, fund, it's available to cover Goodson. So that's been, you know, beginning of the year that we came to council. And now it's been moved almost, this is the third year now. And now, if we still have the money, why are we going through the process of being a bond? That's like we're getting, you know, we're getting a loan. Correct? And that there's interest?
We are. We are.
How come now we're moving through that?
Because we don't have that.
There's, there's a lot of phases to this. The phase one, first part, yeah. But when initially this project was brought forward before my tenure, back in 2021, the bids came in ridiculous. All the prices were crazy. So Hennessy held back the project because the pricing was way out of hand. It's now, it's now gotten better. Even if, say, the worst case scenario, now we've been approved on their website, but not formally approved. That's always, we're just taking precautionary step. But say the grant didn't come in exactly right away, and we had to start using some of the funding from the bonds, we're still responsible for 25% of that project anyways, even with the grant. So what would happen in that case, whatever funds we've started to use to get the project going, we can cease, accept the grant, and we're done at that point. Or if we have not taken any other funds from the bond, we don't have to go for, we don't have to close the loan. So basically, this is just semantics to trying to get it so we don't lose the window.
And what's the total bond that we are taking? 11 million? So it's 11?
11.5 million.
Okay. So we're getting this bond for 11.7 million. So now, let's say FEMA say you approved for how much?
Let's say, let's say FEMA says you get the full grant.
Okay.
Okay? That would be 9 million. We would still require, and let's say the project ends up at 11.5, so we will still need to pay 2.5 million out of our fund, you know, out of our pocket. So at that stage, we can use, you know, just 2.5 million from this, you know, this bond. In case FEMA says you get not 9 million, but 5 million, then that would be the difference between what the project cost is. Now, if the project costs, instead of coming in at 11.5 million, it comes to, let's say, 12 million or 13 million, then, you know, some of this revenue bond can pay for it.
So there's no penalty by any of these bonds if we don't use the whole?
No, there is no penalty as such, but we do have to pay for the.
Portion.
No, we do, we do have to pay for the cost of the revenue bond. So there is a cost involved in terms of engaging the advisors, in terms of engaging, you know, bond agents, in terms of engaging, getting ratings for the city through S and P. So all of that activity, total of that is around $100,000. So some of that, if we don't go for it, depending on at what stage we are, it could be anywhere from 10,000 to 50,000 would be the cost if we don't go for it at all. If we go for it, then that 100,000 will be recovered from the proceeds of the bond anyway. So these are bond costs that you have to pay anyway.
Right now, I've been on the meetings with FEMA on this. They said we've been informally granted it at a 75% already. But the meetings, the Zoom meetings I've had with FEMA, they keep coming back with wanting additional questions, looking at the blueprints of the project, why we, why do we need to host Goodson Street done, including sidewalks and curbs? I fought them on that. I said, because you can't dig a hole 18 feet in the ground straight down. You're going to cave it in. You have to follow OSHA standards. So there's a lot of things we've been going back and forth with FEMA. And it's not the only city here. Southgate is in the same, in the same boat we are right now with FEMA and the same discussion.
So last question, when is this project going to start if we?
I think it'll start probably in '25, not, not '24. Because if, first of all, we need to get the revenue in place. That will take a few months. And then we have to go for the bidding. That will take some time. So I don't see it starting this year.
I think formally it's starting next year, but time to get shovels in the ground, it could, it could go a little bit further than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. Did we have some money for this project from before? I remember Kathy was telling us we have some, but that came higher.
I believe you did ask money for this project before, but it was in that, one of those first sections that we've already completed because now we're already in another phase of it.
So as far as the border fund is concerned, it's an enterprise fund. So whatever costs that we incur, it has to be paid through the revenues generated. And those revenues are generated either through grants or through water charges, sewer charges, and so on and so forth.
Yes.
Well, they summed it up pretty well. Anxious to get this going. I really wish it had already been going by now. This is one of those projects that keeps getting stalled on us. But, I mean, we're, we're taking the steps. We're kind of at FEMA's mercy to some degree, so we're doing what we've got to do to get to the finish line.
Yeah, I think the thing that we need to understand is that this is a bond that we will be getting at 1%. You know, so it's, it's a very good price. And it's true, it's true, Eagle.
Okay. So you guys, you guys know if it is good, we trust you guys, and we have to do it.
We have to do this project?
That's all we need. That's all. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. I think it's discussion enough.
All right.
Yeah. While we're talking, we know that exactly we need you.
Did you want to, are you ready for this project?
I am, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor, Mr. Proten, members of the council, administration. My name's Eric McLaughlin. I'm a partner with Dickinson Wright Law Firm, a member of its public finance group. I'm the city's bond attorney. I'm not, I'm not a representative there, I'm a separate consultant. But I prepared the resolution for you, and what I wanted to do is I wanted to emphasize something Mr. Hassan said about it being the first step in the process. So there are two formal legal actions that the city council will take with respect to the bonds. This one is to authorize the publication of a notice of intent, which is required by state law. It starts a 45-day referendum period, after which, if the city has not received any petitions for election, you can proceed, you have obtained the authority to issue bonds, and you can proceed to issue the bonds. We will be back to you at a future date with a formal bond resolution that actually authorizes the issuance of bonds. The resolution tonight does not authorize the issuance of them. It authorizes publication of notice of intent only. Once the notice of intent is published, the city is not obligated to issue bonds. It's not obligated to issue bonds in any particular amount. It merely sets the maximum ceiling of bonds, of amount, of the amount of bonds that you can issue. So that's why it says 11.5 million. It's designed to cover the entire project in case we need that authority to borrow in the future. So in one step, it's a legal procedural step. And the other, other aspect, the other way to consider it is it's sort of protected. It protects the city's ability to be able to borrow the funds it needs to complete the project if, for some reason, FEMA doesn't come through with the grant like they, like they're expected to. So that, if there are any questions on the resolution, I'd be happy to take them now. But I did want to emphasize that, that this is the first step. Does not actually authorize the bonds. You'll be asked to do that later with a much more detailed resolution. This just publishes the notice of intent to get the legal process started.
Thank you, Eric. I think it's good to clarify that there's no obligation at this stage for the city. It's just an authority. It's just a notice of intent.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you all. All right. We can go ahead and vote on this.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-03 approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Next one is resolution 2024-04, approving engagement, appointment to Robert W. Bear and CO for municipal advisory services.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the companion resolution. Basically, I think we just go through.
Okay.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-04 approved.
Thank you. The last one is presentation and discussion on Hamtramck Bike and Trail Network.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have our CED staff here to go through this. They've put a lot of work into this, and hopefully, we had a good presentation for you.
Thank you.
You're with me?
Yes.
Thank you all. We are here to talk about Hamtramck's bike trail network. This is the bike lanes that are being installed along Joseph Compo and Holbrook. So then you can see on the map here in the left side, you can see the difference between the same Detroit, Hamtramck, Highland Park, and then there's Dearborn. This is, the bike lanes are part of a wider network. They will be a part of a network that goes throughout Metro Detroit and comes in four So tonight, we'll go over an introduction to the regional loop, where it will be going, and the economic community benefits of multimodal transportation review. And then we'll go over the four different segments of the bike lanes. And then we'll look at the completed segments in Metro Detroit that have already been done. My colleague Alessandro and I recently were able to go to Dearborn and see the opening of the trail on Warren, and it was beautiful what was completed already. And tomorrow, we are holding a public engagement meeting at 5:30 at the library. We welcome you all to join us so we can get public feedback and hear what residents are looking to see in the bike lanes. So the regional loop is a regional asset. It is not simply just bike lanes that are going through Hamtramck. We have a strong bike community already here in Metro Detroit. Point out, as a, as growing up in Dearborn, we were right next to Heinz Drive. And on Saturdays in the summer, Heinz Drive is closed to all vehicle traffic, and it is open to pedestrians, open to bikers, rollerbladers, anybody who's looking to get out and be a healthy activity. But the regional loop will go from the Riverwalk in Detroit to the Detroit Quinny Cut up to Hamtramck, entering through near American Axl, going north through the community, going north beyond the city, North Carpenter, on Joseph Compo, then turning westerly into Highland Park, going all the way through Highland Park. And then it will make its way to the Dearborn border and then connect back downtown Detroit. So this is a, an asset that everyone in the community can, can take advantage of, and also it will provide overall economic benefit and also health to the community. So what are the goals of the project? The first goal is to use government funding and grants that are specifically used to be used towards multimodal transportation and public space redevelopment for recreation. The grants that we are applying for and looking to receive to fund this project do not, for the most part, require a local match. So there is not required funds from the city. It is funds that are devoted specifically for multimodal transportation. They cannot be used on other projects. They can't be used on other capital. They cannot be used for any other project that we are looking to get done here in Hamtramck. If we don't use the funds, they'll go back to the federal government and be given to another community to be used. The second goal is to help cities grow in Hamtramck as a result of the completed project and attract companies and talent. Bike lanes have shown to improve economic activity and attract new customers to downtowns. The third goal is to be better connected with Detroit, Dearborn, Highland Park via a healthy, active transportation loop. Right now, you could get down to, you can get down to the Riverwalk in 25 minutes, and we are. And we are looking forward to seeing that you can get downtown to Mid to Highland Park and to Dearborn through healthy means. And now I'll hand over to my colleague Alessandro.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, so I'll talk a little bit on that. So yeah, so this is not, I think what we saw in Hamtramck was a bit disproportionate versus about seeing the whole project. People saw the bike lanes go up. We didn't know what they were for. Most people don't know. The name of this project is called the Joe Louis Greenway, which people don't really know what that is. So that's why we kind of want to phrase this as the bike loop, just to make it easier for people to understand what this is. But yeah, so whenever you hear the name Joe Louis Greenway, this is what this project is, the regional project. So you might hear that in the news. There's a lot of portions already being built. So yeah, so kind of reiterating what Austin was just saying. The grants that we are applying, so first of all, I think the main concern, we did a public engagement online. There was a survey that went out. A lot of people answered it in the community. The main concern was the money people had said, why are we spending money on this? Why don't we do the alleys? Why don't we do the water? Why don't we do this? And all that to say is this project is not going to be paid for with the general fund. It's not going to be paid for with the road fund. It's going to be paid through grants that it says, projects that are only for recreation, and it can't be for parking. It can't be for car infrastructure. It can't be for alleys. It can't be for anything of the sort. These were, a lot of the grants were kind of started during COVID to promote active living and kind of promote a better health. So a lot of the grants that we're applying for are to create kind of public recreation facilities. So you see a lot of other communities have made kind of outdoor gyms or they've made kind of like better parks. So this is all kind of related to getting our community more active, that has health benefits, that has property value benefits, it has a lot of community benefits. So yeah, so we just want to reiterate that. So I know people come and will ask, you say, take off the bike lanes from on the south part of Joseph Campo. Don't do this. Why are they there? Why do we spend money on that? And that's to say, we didn't spend money. This was all part of grants that are for this specifically.
So we'd like to take a look at a case study that was in Memphis, Tennessee, where they did bring in bike lanes that were not there previously. It is known as the Broad Avenue Art District of Memphis. It was formerly a bustling commercial downtown district with businesses throughout and was walkable. But as time went on, businesses started to move out of the district. It became abandoned. A lot of businesses were no longer utilized. They actually increased the speed limit on that road. So it became more of a highway, and the walkability of it decreased. Residents in about '06 started looking at what could be done in that district. And in 2010, they started a road diet and a complete street redesign of this district in Tennessee. They teamed redesigned the street level, public spaces to illustrate how better infrastructure, especially focused on bicycles and pedestrian, can breathe life into a commercial district. They were successful. Actually, the residents were really excited about it and even went out and painted some of the lanes themselves. And the data you see here on the slide is from two years after the project completion. There were six new businesses, 29 property renovations, 70 that were formerly bladed. And there was a 30% per year revenue growth for businesses on this road. After five years, there was $20 million in private investment in the opening of more than two dozen new businesses. Bike lanes, they also experienced a decrease in traffic accidents and pedestrian injuries. And that is part of having enhanced roadways, where you do have road diets with bike lanes, which require residents to slow down and also recognize what is in front of them more and pay attention to their surroundings while on the roadway. Hoboken, New Jersey, experienced a decrease of 30% of pedestrian injuries when they introduced their bike lanes. Bike lanes have proven to increase residential and commercial real estate values. Studies across the U.S. have shown that people are willing to pay a premium for a home if it is near bicycle infrastructure such as bicycle lanes, and they can easily access community amenities. There were study after study I found that showed that homes closer to bike trails sold for more, between $9,000 to $11,000 more. And one of the biggest concerns here in the community is property taxes. And under state law, the annual increase in property taxes capped at 5% or no more than the annual inflation rate. So whichever one's lower, if it's 5% or the annual inflation rate is lower, that is where you can max out on your taxes. It will not increase. So this past year, the inflation rate was 7.3%. So the 5% cap was where it was at. So home values could not increase more, or taxes could not increase more. Now, on average year, inflation was between 3% and 4%. So that is where the cap is for taxes. So if we do see an increase in real estate values for the bike trail, as long as you keep the home or it stays in your family, it is capped at 5%. Or if the inflation rate's lower, that is the increase that it'll go to. This example here is the Monin Trail in Indiana. The homes within a half mile of the trail sell for an average to 11% more than similar homes farther away. And there's similar studies in Ohio and Portland and on the East Coast. Bike lanes have proved to increase retail visibility and sales volumes. The first protected bike lanes you see here were installed in Manhattan on 8th and 9th Avenues. Studies indicate that bike lanes improve economic activity at resale establishments or have no effect on business sales. 23 studies have proven this over and over again. Bikers actually frequent businesses more often than other people who use other modes of transportation. They will bike to the same business, and they will purchase their needs at the same establishment over and over again. Because that is part of the culture where you can get out and be part of the community, where you're seeing each business, not just driving past it in your car. You're actually next to pedestrians biking and seeing what is going on in those businesses that are kind of tucked away, that are hard to see. On bikes, you can see them better. Studies in Colorado, Wisconsin, indicate that cyclists bring in over $1 billion to their local economies. A study done by the Michigan Department of Transportation in 2014, and this is 10 years ago at this point, indicated that economic benefits of biking estimated to provide the state a total economic benefit of approximately $668 million annually. The report concluded that bicycling should be a key component for larger economic development strategies, especially those considering economic benefits of bicycle-related activities. There's currently a shift away from single automobiles use. This can be seen especially in the lifestyle of younger generations and millennials and Generation Z. They're bicycling 24% more than previous generations, using public transportation 40% more, and are using single automobiles 23% less than previous generations. More employers we attract to the city, the more employees, which will increase the city's revenue from income tax. So we want to attract employers that are attracting young people, where there are high-value jobs, which would help the city overall by having more revenue through income tax. So looking for those type of jobs, those type of employers, we want to bring them to the city of Hamtramck. Amazon, when they put out their RFQ for their second headquarters here in the U.S., in the RFQ, it, or it was an RFP, actually, it stated bike lanes twice, that the locale that they wanted to move to had bike lanes available. A study done by the University of Massachusetts at Amherst showed that an investment of $1 million in bicycle infrastructure creates 11.4 local jobs, while an investment of $1 million in road and car infrastructure creates 7.8 jobs. And one of the mayors of the largest cities in the U.S., former mayor of Chicago, Rahm Emanuel, he said, after investing a significant amount of money in bike lanes throughout the city, you cannot be for a startup, high-tech economy, and not be pro-bike. Bike lanes make workers and residents healthier and more productive as well. Not everyone gets the same opportunity to be physically active, and bicycling provides that opportunity. It provides, research has shown that physical activity improves mental health and overall mental performance. It helps prevent unhealthy weight gain, reduces the risk of many chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and type 2 diabetes, helps reduce anxiety, and improves sleep quality, improves cognitive ability, and reduces the risk of dementia. It also improves bone and muscular health. And also, the studies have shown that actually promoting healthier travel options in the workplace has shown to reduce absenteeism by up to 20%. And regional trail, this is my favorite statistic that I found, a regional trail in Portland, Oregon, helps area residents avoid gaining 17 million pounds each year, saving the region $155 million per year in obesity-related healthcare costs. And I'll pass it back over to Carolyn.
So I realized after we posted this slide that we didn't just include like a general map. So I just kind of, we created this today to create some context. So I apologize about that. Actually, Alessandro, do you have one more of those?
That's okay. I should.
Do you share? Okay. You can go back to that presentation. Sorry. I should have said, keep the presentation. Okay, so this first section that I want to talk about is basically the part that starts at Hamtramck Drive and Joseph Campo and goes up to Holbrook. I should have put that in the title, but that's when I was saying kind of like the south side of the city. It's that section from Hamtramck Drive, when you're coming in from the south, all the way up to Holbrook. Now, that's the area where we already have bike lanes, right? That's the area where the lanes have already been installed. The community has communicated, you know, several problems. The main one was loss of parking in that area. We've actually had a lot of meetings. We've gone on site, talked to the businesses. We've worked with engineers. We're trying to find solutions to that. So that's part of why we're here today, and that's why we're starting with this. Because why talk about the other routes when we're not talking about the route that, you know, already is, that we're trying to make it better? Another issue is that it's currently not connected to anything. You know, it's just like a lane that starts nowhere and goes nowhere. And so that's why when we're talking about the whole 30-mile loop, goes through four cities, it would connect. And if you go south, eventually, Hamtramck Drive, the one that hasn't been repaved yet, would be fixed. And there'd be a very green bike path there with a lot of plants, and that would take you down to the riverfront. So I know right now it doesn't seem like it goes anywhere, but that segment would eventually connect to the riverfront. You could get to the riverfront in about 25 minutes on a bike. So in terms of the fixes with the parking, we do want to take these into consideration and figure out ways to fix them. So we've working with Hennessy, put together this plan. If you look at the bottom, this is just part of the engineering document. We couldn't put the whole thing on the screen, but I do have them here if anybody wants to see it. But if you look at the bottom, you see angled parking. So on the bottom of the screen, it would be Veterans Park. And then on the top would be several businesses, including Hamtramck City Market and the medical building that is just south of the market. So that's just to provide context. You see that the additional, there would be additional parking spots provided by angled parking, as well as we would be adding two crosswalks. One at Goodson, which is shown, kind of like with the crossing lines. Thank you. And then a new one that's not on the screen that would either be at Dan or an upgraded crossing at Andrews Street. So basically, the crosswalk would have two effects. It would help people who are parking across the street, you know, go to the area where the shopping is. At the same time, it would really provide a lot of safety for people who are trying to get to the park. Because if you're walking to the park right now, there's not a real safe way to cross and get to the park. So it would help in multiple ways. So that's that segment. We put a diagram of a rapid flashing beacon. Is that what it's called, Troy? Thank you. Yeah, we put a diagram so we could do a safer crosswalk, because you'd be able to push one of those, you know, buttons and have the lights and just warn people about pedestrians that are, you know, so they can slow down. We can go on to the next. Okay, so on the map that I just handed out, you see there's a little segment going off to the side on Holbrook. That's technically not part of the regional loop. It's not technically part of the, what's known as the
Main Loop.
The Greenway, the Joe Louis Greenway. But this is the segment that has the most, we get the most requests for this lane. So this lane specifically has the most community support. It's listed in our 2010 master plan. It's listed in our 2020 master plan. The reason is, is because it would connect us by bike to Midtown, to Wayne State University, and to the North End neighborhood, which is up and coming. I don't know if you're familiar with the North End neighborhood, but property values were very low, and they're rising quickly. And a lot of people are investing in the North End neighborhood. So we just put a quote there from 2020 community feedback about, you know, this being really the most needed bike lane. And again, this is for people who might be going to work or to school, might not have a car, or just want like a cheaper, healthier way to commute to places. We can go to the next segment. So on the bottom is like a screenshot of the engineering plan. Again, this is a Holbrook bike lane from Joseph Campo to St. Aubin, which is the Detroit border. So the top pictures have two examples of a protected bike lane, which are, by the way, much safer than unprotected bike lanes. These protected bike lanes would be on the south side of Holbrook. And so you can see like the two-way bike lane right there in that document. This is just, again, a snippet. The full engineering document is posted online. I will be here after as well if you want to look at that document. I have it in paper. So we'll just go all the way across Holbrook and connect us to Midtown. Go to the next slide. So there are two options. There's a regular Holbrook option, which is in green. It really just stays in Holbrook. Then there's another option where it would dip down south and go on Dimer and then come back. I believe the option on the left is preferred, and it would be safer. It would also be much cheaper as well to build the option on the left. If you go, actually, if you go back to the previous slide, in terms of funding, I know that the team touched on this, but this would probably fit into the climate action plan and be funded by climate reduction grants. So it would not, again, relate to city funds. It relates to things that relate to pollution and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And now, actually, we have Spalding D. Decker here, Cassie's here, to talk about the alleyway. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cassie Meidel with Spalding D. Decker. We were engaged last summer to develop concepts for sections of the Joseph Campo Alley segment and engage the community for feedback on those concepts as well. So first, looking at the intersection, and that was from Holbrook. So specifically, the Joseph Campo-Holbrook intersection. What you don't see on this rendering would be the south Holbrook bike lanes at this time. But when we looked at it, how do you connect from the existing lanes on Joseph Campo through the intersection and then turning to enter the alley? Safety is the biggest concern of this intersection. And so we determined that going through the alley at the light would be safer than turning and then trying to cross Holbrook right before the traffic signal. So we also propose a yield turning sign, which you can't see, but it's the red box in the middle of the intersection for cars turning left. Improvements or upgrades to the crossing, so there's a signalized crossing for bicyclists as well, and aligning the lanes, which would be on the other side of Holbrook, or on Holbrook on the other on the other side of Joseph Compo, which right now you've got lanes that aren't, they're not perfectly aligned across the intersection, so parking on the north side so that that middle line between the bike lane would be straight through, which would help provide clear direction and mitigate risk of collision. And we propose a raised, so protected raised bike lane on, on that north side to provide some separation, since it would be two-way traffic. Then we looked at, thank you, the A-Block segment. So as an example, we picked A-Block segment, this is Poland to Norwalk, that really had all of the, you know, elements and challenges in this segment. So the existing conditions of the, of the alley, right, are great, recently paved. We also recognize that the alley must maintain, be maintained as a shared space for businesses who are receiving deliveries, for customers and employees who are also parking in, in parking areas there, also residents who are accessing the residential area, go through the alley there, and then just alley users. So even in our observations, for multiple days, multiple different times, we observed people walking to prayer, very common route, prayer on both sides, shoppers, a lot of bicyclists with like grocery bags on their handlebars because they were picking up a few things, families and school kids, kids, groups of kids, and we asked them, you know, why the alley, like, like why are you choosing here? And a lot of people said that they, they felt safer to them, it was more, someone said there was more sunshine, it was literally warmer than the street. So, so you have people that were using the alley today and recognizing that that's already a shared space, so how can we improve safety for all of the users? Which is why we did not propose, you know, a protected bike lane there, it's striping the lane, it's just marking the lane, knowing that there's going to be moments of crossing and intersecting.
So will it be shared by cars and bicycles?
It is today, and it's not striped, so the, and the other challenge is that there's dumpsters throughout which create a lot of obstacles. So it would be shared, not obstructed, propose designating some like delivery areas, so that people have a visual clue as to where they should stop, and removing the angled dumpsters that actually create the biggest safety concern today, as cars and bicyclists or pedestrians are moving between those spaces. By offering a consolidated dumpster enclosure, which, which would change the perception of the alley as well today. You can tell business owners try to keep it clean, right, but multiple alleys means multiple states on the concrete, just multiple risk of debris not ending up in the designated container. So that, that would be proposed improvement as well. And we ran, next one, thank you, so we took those, those renderings and concepts and brought them to the folks that were using the alley today, including some businesses. And we also thank you to the team for arranging an Arabic speaking interpreter, so that we were inclusive of feedback. And some comments received were that the city desperately needs safe pathways and cyclist, for cyclists and pedestrians. Additionally, it would be great to have a path that connects Hamtramck just around here. It's great to have an easier way to get into Hamtramck on my bike, there's plenty of places, you know, outside the city, but this would, this would make me go there more often because I'd have a way to connect. And then my favorite, but when I first heard about the Joe Louis Greenway being in the alley, I thought it was dumb, now I've been biking in the alley over the last week and I, you know, I'm choosing to use it as my route, and they said, it's nice and I like it, the condition is actually better than other area, other alleys. And that was the person, you know, who was using it as a commuter, as a commuter route as well. So, and a, you know, local stakeholder, teacher at Hamtramck High School. Anyone, before I hand it back, anyone have any questions?
I mean, are we done with the presentation?
I'm going to do a little bit, one more section and then we'll be done.
Because we have a lot of questions.
I have a recap too, that I want to talk about.
So you want me to finish it and then?
I mean, I have a few.
Okay, so there are multiple design options for Joseph Compo between Kniff and Carpenter. Here are three different engineering options, you know, split on both sides of the street, two bike lanes on just one side, two-way bike lane, or even going down the middle. We'll go to the next slide. Here are just some visuals, this was a rendering from about five years ago. Notice that because the street is much wider, if, if we did something like this, we wouldn't actually lose any parking spots, because you can still fit parking on the other side of the bike lanes. So that would be a good, a good thing. Go to the next one. And here's an example from Detroit, they redid the entire streetscape, including, you know, trees and benches and just adding in a lot more amenities. Go to the next slide. Here's another example of a bike lane that goes down the middle of the street from another city. So we don't have a, you know, planned design for this, there's a bunch of options that we could do for Kniff, for Joseph Compo between Kniff and Carpenter. And then we're going to talk about a few of the segments from other cities.
Yeah, so our team has been able to go to several of the grant openings this year. I think we've gone to three or four already, whether it's beginning construction or finalizing construction. So we went to the Dearborn and West Warren, it was amazing to see how many people were there, a lot of state support, and even representatives from Washington coming to these openings, you can tell it's a big project for the Menchworth area. And I think this kind of also shows Hamtramck being able to tap into kind of Detroit's investment. You see a lot of money going into downtown Detroit, but it's kind of being very concentrated, and you don't really see a lot of areas like us, we're not currently having the same traffic that downtown Detroit is having. But this connectivity kind of helps connect us to other communities. I know that most people don't bike every day or bike to work every day, most people around here don't, but even having this infrastructure is going to make people who bike semi-regularly, they have a bike, and they're downtown Detroit, they're going to want to do a loop or part of a loop, and they might go into Hamtramck and they don't even know about Hamtramck, but they're going to follow the loop and kind of follow into it. Next one. And just to finalize, tomorrow, we're having a public meeting, we want to kind of educate the community and help people understand, I know this kind of, this, this whole project, we've been trying to be overly transparent about it, since we, a lot of people are very confused about the project, so we want to make sure people know. So this public meeting is specifically for the alley portion in Joseph Compo. So this is, we're just trying to gather feedback.
We'll have materials for all the segments.
Yeah, we'll have information, but we're trying mainly to gather feedback because we're applying for grants for this part of the process, and there'll be halal food available thanks to the Joe Louis Partnership, and the Amiches is also donating food. So it's fairly friendly event, it's a drop-in, so it's from 5:30 to 7:30, but you can just stop by and learn, or if you want to give feedback, if you say you don't like it, or if you have any sort of feedback, let constituents know by taking a stop by.
Thank you, teacher. Let me, I have a few points to make. So this is a good presentation from your point of view. I can tell you that some of those research studies that you mentioned and comments, a little bit biased, because they don't apply to a city like Hamtramck, they apply to bigger cities like those you, you mentioned. It's beneficial to those cities, but in a, Hamtramck situation is unique, we have a small city, limited parking space already, a crowded city, and residents, not too many people prefer to ride bikes, they prefer to drive. And so we were already limited with parking spaces, and this would take more, you know, when, when this was approved in 2019 or so, I didn't hear about that. 2018. Or 18, no, like, the community was not consulted, or we did not, no one took the opinion of the community about this, just like, excuse me, let me finish this. And just like the parking meters, same thing, the community was not consulted, and now I get emails on a daily basis or weekly from people getting tickets and sending me an email that I will never visit your city again because I got a ticket here and there. So I think it's hurting businesses more than what we benefit from them. Same thing with the bike lanes, I'd like to encourage riding bikes, but in Hamtramck, I think it's hurting businesses. That we are, you know, it was summarized once by a small conversation that happened here between Bill Meyer and another person who commented and said that I'm, I'm happy I saw two bicycles, you know, passing by Joseph Compo, and Bill Meyer said, I saw 100 cars driving around looking for parking spots, I see them every day. So we cannot, I mean, from my point of view, you can't restrict a whole side of a street for six months or eight months to wait for the summertime for two bicycles to pass by Joseph Compo. I mean, it just doesn't make no sense. So what I ask you is the alley shared by cars and bicycles, because there's the, the street, the main street of Joseph Compo is protected by lines and cannot be shared by cars and bicycles? And people are being ticketed if they stop in front of the business to, for example, to pick up some boxes from the store or something, even for a few minutes. So like I said, the Hamtramck situation is, is unique, and I think it's not beneficial to the city. We are done now, and it's, it's been designed and we lost, you know, there's so much money lost already, but if there's a way to look for an alternative pathway from south of Holbrook
Mr. Mayor. To the If I may.
Yeah.
So we've, we've definitely heard everybody's concerns, I mean, we've all spoke to yourself and everyone in council and, and the community at this point, I mean, we, all of us have been out there talking to the business owners and, and voicing the pros and cons, and believe it or not, we did have a few people that said they liked, well, actually, a lot of people that said they liked it too. So there, there is a, there is a divide on this, I will say that, in our community. The business owners are probably the loudest, most vocal, 100%. But at the end of the day, we, we now basically have the Joe Louis Greenway on, on both ends of Hamtramck, we have it on the south and we have it on the north. They've designed it to come to us and basically pass through. I guess at the end of the day, we could snub them and say, no, we're not going to participate in this at all, and, and stop a regional project. I don't recommend it, but I mean, if that's what the council determines, we, we can certainly do that, because it's, it's the council's and mayor's will. But with, with that said, you know, we've, we've expended hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in grant money to do the little portion we have. Wasn't us, I mean, it was in process when we got here, but what we're trying to do is make the best of it and, and help everyone that has been affected by this, and, and design it accordingly for the future so that everyone's happy. Now maybe not 100% happy, but at least something they can live with and that the people, you know, are at a compromise. And with that said, the very first slide that we put up there tonight was an attempt to help those businesses that are, are pretty upset about this. We want to do the angled parking in front of Veterans Park and add some spots. In addition to that, we want to put a large crosswalk right there to increase the walkability directly to the party store that's very incensed about this, and generally just increase the walkability in that whole little area of what we've already done right now, so that it helps those businesses there in the long run. Now will it be 100% what was there in the past? No, it won't, but I do believe, given a little time and a little construction, it'll probably be better in the long run, and not only that, but it'll, in addition, slow the traffic down through that segment of Joseph Compo, which everyone knows, we have a problem with speeders and red lights and stop signs, and adding things like this will slow down the traffic. So at the end of the day, if a car pulls up into the angled parking spot and just quickly jumps across the street into the party store, what's another 40 feet as opposed to what we had there before? And hey, maybe at the end, at the end, maybe the bikers do come, maybe in a couple of years, and maybe it does increase the businesses, and maybe that does happen. But frankly, I don't really want to reverse tracks and spend a few hundred thousand dollars to repay the grant and then have to rip it out on top of it, and then what do we do there? I'd rather try to find the compromise here and move forward, and my hope is, by the end of our conversation here, council at least somewhat agrees that let's get moving on these, these angled sidewalks, let's get moving on these crosswalks, let's see if we can help the businesses there now. And then we brought the other plan to you today because we really, we want to talk about where we go from here, and, and we, top of our list is parking, we get it, we, we don't want to, we don't want to goof up parking with the rest of the community. And Holbrook is fairly wide open, we have a bunch of problems on Holbrook right now. I, I know there's been asks for crosswalks because of the new coffee shop in the mosque and other stuff there now, but our hope is that if we take the crosswalk going west on Holbrook, it serves a bunch of functions. We connect American Axle, which has asked for it, we connect to Midtown and Wayne State eventually, which would like to do that, and we've, we've got a lot of community feedback that people want that. One of the other really big things is it slows down the traffic in Holbrook, because frankly, everyone speeds down Holbrook like crazy right now. We do traffic enforcement in there, but the only true surefire way to slow that down is to narrow that street, and by adding a crosswalk through there, we do just that. Maybe we don't exactly put a crosswalk over for the mosque and the coffee shop there, but if we have limited the narrow field of the cars driving, now it's a heck of a lot safer for people to cross there. Additionally, no one parks next to the town center now, so we're not losing parking there. No one really parks in front of the senior plaza now, so we're not losing parking there. It's sporadic in front of Kowalski, granted, Kowalski might be a little incensed about some spots being there, but frankly, they have a big parking lot. So at the end of the day, all's we're doing is slowing down the traffic and increasing the walk, or the, the bikability through there on that aspect. So I would hope that we approve that. Moving forward from there, where do we go to get up to Carpenter eventually? Well, we talked briefly about the west Joseph Compo Alley. As mayor, you had asked, is that going to be shared? 100%, we intend for that to be shared. We know those businesses still need deliveries through there, so we intend that there still will be deliveries and there still will be cars, but we want to limit it, we want to do it to local and business traffic only. You know, if you're not living there or you're a business there, we don't want you going through the alley at that point, so people will still be able to go through. We want to do raised crosswalks over every, on every intersection there, so that it's safer for the bikes and the pedestrians to get through, and we also want to take all them dumpsters and be very strategic of what we do with them, so they're out of that pathway and moved off to the side so that it looks good, and then ultimately, we want to do murals all the way down there. I really do believe that will increase the business on Joseph Compo, because, and my hopes is that with all the murals and the walkability and the bikability, that it becomes a destination. I really think it will. I mean, we already have a mural behind O'Leman, and heck, we're not even anywhere near finishing that, and they've already taken that step, so I think that'll happen. And then the very last variable of this is, what do we do at Kniff? That's going to be tricky, but there is a lot of money being thrown at this. I mean, the state of Michigan, I think, is funding $50 million alone, if I'm not mistaken, throwing it at this regional project, not to mention these huge foundations that are funding this as well. I think it's not out of the realm of possibilities that we could potentially even get funding to redevelop Joseph Compo, Kniff, all the way to Carpenter in entirety. I'd like to see the whole area ripped out, infrastructure and all, sidewalks all the way down to the dirt, where we redo all the infrastructure on Joseph Compo there and plant it exactly how we want it, make it more walkable, make it more, better for parking, make it aesthetically a hell of a lot better. You know, if, if we can do by the Greenways this distance from Kniff all the way to Carpenter and rip it out, that's a win. And there's a number of ways we can do that. We talked about maybe taking the bike lane right up the center of Joseph Compo. The master plan itself calls for immediate in there now, a green space. Look at some of these other areas of Detroit where that's happened, specifically Liberty Noises did that, they did a complete ripout, it's beautiful. I think we could do that. If we get this done and we protect the parking to our best of our abilities moving forward, we protect the, you know, the overall transport of vehicles and everything, all in its entirety, I think we can get this done with a compromise. Will everyone be 100% happy? No, but we're trying to make the absolute best of what we got, and I hope that you at least acquiesce to us getting the parking going in the south in and trying to get some money in for the rest of it at this point.
All right, I mean, I, I know we spent so much time and effort discussing this in the past, I mean, if the council wants to move on, give it a try with the parking, cross the park, and the crosswalks, and see how it works. If there's a way to put on Holbrook unprotected If there's a way to put on Holbrook unprotected bike lanes and move it toward the center a little bit and keep the parking in front of, you know, Kitab Coffee and the mosque and all those...
Well, we want to leave the parking alone on the north side of Holbrook. It's going to be on the south side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we won't, we almost won't even affect parking at all because no one parks there now. And we also get to thin Holbrook, which slows traffic down naturally, which, you know, we're trying to slow traffic.
All right. Councilor, what's that?
Mr. Chair, you know, if I could rewind this and have bike lanes on Joseph Campu, I will do that. I've been living in the city most of my life. Barely anybody drives a bike, okay? Sadly, that, before we were council, council members that were here approved it. And that caused a lot of issues to those businesses beside the meters. I spoken to you multiple times that from Holbrook to Hamtramck Drive, we have to solve issue with parking. We talked about the angle parking, so I'm happy that there's a plan for it. I think before we start moving to any plan on Holbrook, so let's work on this. Try to fix these parking on the south end in front of Veterans Park. Instead of having one crosswalk, we should have two. But there's one in front of Danforth that there's no lanes right now, where kids kind of use it almost most of the time. I do ride my bike. You know, I ride everywhere. But the way they designed these bike lanes on Joseph Campu and the space that they took, it's ridiculous. Right now, if you drive, if a car drives, if there's a car parked in front of Shiva's Restaurant and then you have a car that passes by, they cannot open the door because they're going to get hit. That's how neural it is. So they're so close to each other, you know? People almost got hit, people, their mirrors broken because it's not enough space. It is what it is. It's already there. We wasted so much grants on that. But if I could rewind or maybe get grants so that delete the whole thing and maybe start from Hamtramck Drive to Denton Street, Denton to Lumpkin, where there's not a lot of businesses there, and there's not a lot of houses, and then go through Holbrook if we, you know, if we like. But like you said, you know, it's been done, it's already been paid. It's a grant, it's not from, you know, it's not in our hands. It's a huge grant and a project that most, you know, there's four or five cities are doing this. But I want, you know, I will ask my colleagues to pause anything that has to do with bikes right now. Let's try to fix these parking angles at Veterans Park. At least we can make those businesses and visitors who do come, visit Hamtramck and Veterans Park, they have spaces to park. As of now, there is no spaces.
Councilor, it's my hope that we can get that going as soon as possible. I hope tomorrow that we can already start the ball rolling and get this done. Maybe it's a little too aggressive, but I was hoping for spring to have those angled parking and the crosswalks going.
If we're able to do that and then come back again, we'll think about Holbrook.
Yeah, I think with Holbrook, like we said, if it's on the side where there are no businesses, that's okay because there are some, we are hoping that some investments and developments are coming, and this is one of the conditions they want, that bike lane, you know, established as soon as possible for them to start developing the area. So I would, I mean, I would support it. It's not going to hurt anyone on the other side. So that's fine for me, I mean...
I'm with you. If we can focus on the south end. Start with that big issue that we have, at least you have those, you know, residents and also businesses kind of calm down for a while and then, you know...
I truly believe that with those angled parking and the crosswalks, the businesses are going to be a lot happier. Not maybe 100%, but I think they're going to be a lot happier.
The mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
Yeah, we need to just add all the mayor and Rafa he speak, that we just close something. Did Hamtramck like our city, example, Halembar, Woodwood Avenue? They have Hamtramck spa like Woodwood Avenue?
Oh, space?
Space, yeah. They got a space like Woodwood Avenue?
Do we want a space to put in?
Yeah, yeah. There's a downtown Detroit, a downtown Hamtramck, same, a downtown Halembar. They got no space in Hamtramck. And we said they bring more revenue. They killed revenue in Hamtramck. They closed all the business. I love the bike, I love, but we have to figure it out. I'm not going to support that one, only if you fix this issue from Holbrook till Hamtramck Drive.
That's what we're trying, upset.
Yeah, that's my, because I know this one, they killed Hamtramck. And when we passed that one, the community, they don't know. The community don't know. Like when we did tomorrow, everybody, they know. They're going to start. This is bad issue.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so listening to how much money we lose to pulling those out from the Joseph Campu?
Thank you, that question is...
You're talking about the, what's already installed for bike lanes? A few hundred thousand. I don't have the exact number, but...
And those are grants money. We're not losing anything anyways. And as Mr. Mayor said, you know, if you did Chicago, New York, California, it would make sense. But in our city like this, mostly when we suffer...
It's time for Hamtramck.
And every, believe me, everywhere we walk, people complain. I see one person appreciate those bike lanes. Everybody complains.
Problem is, councilman, though, if we pull it out, not only do we have to pay to pull it out, but then we have to refund the grant. So we will be helping.
It's almost our future.
It's on the Michigan Department of Transportation, so that, that's on our record. So anytime we apply for another, any Michigan Department of Transportation, whether it's road, anything, they're going to say, "This grant was refunded because they didn't want it." So that puts us at risk for any funding in the future for not only bike, for everything.
It's real problematic.
If I could just speak to the economic side of it. So I know we only put up a couple examples of other cities and the benefits. I personally was neutral on this project when I started. It was just part of, you know, what I got assigned to do. But after researching the impact on small, medium, and big cities, there's a lot of data that shows that it increases economic activity. If you think about our vacant, so we only put up a few cities there because we didn't want to put up, you know, 50 slides of different cities, but that's why we created this handout. You know, it has small towns, big towns, coastal. So look into it, you know, you might think it doesn't help the economics of the city, but just from researching it, we now believe that it would. So that's one thing. I know we mentioned a few cities, but this document is here just to really answer that question of, you know, we're not New York, we're not this city, we're not Tennessee. But there are small cities that have benefited as well. At the same time, we share characteristics with large cities because we are dense, we are walkable, so we're kind of like a small city, big city. But it seems to work in both contexts. As well, this loop is only one-fifth complete. So when people say no one's using it, that's because the loop itself only has a fifth of the segments done. So it's not until the whole thing is constructed that people are going to really be doing it. People, most people will not bike unless they feel safe. And so like if you try to drive, not drive, ride on Hamtramck Drive right now, coming up from the Du Quinter Cut, like very few people would even attempt that because of the potholes, there's no lighting over there. So of course, no one's coming into Hamtramck right now. That's because this is a five to 10-year project and only a fifth of the loop is complete. But if you imagine that, that Hamtramck Drive is done, there's lighting, there's plants, it looks like a park, you can see that people would then feed into the south side of the city. But yeah, no one's really using it right now because it doesn't go anywhere. Again, it's a five to 10-year regional plan, so it wouldn't really get used that much until it's complete.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of want to wrap up our side of this at this point because I know we've kept you for quite some time. But if there's any just quick feedback we can get from yourself or council beyond this, but I'd like to really get started on the things to try to help that business and then bring the rest back to you as we go. Is there any other concerns directly that we can work on addressing as we go?
Not only that, you know who drove on those bike lanes? The city bus. I was parked, he actually drove in there. Even the market has a video of that city bus that kind of drove on there. From, from Holbrook all, and I know he was trying to pass all the cars, but he drove from Holbrook all the way to Hamtramck Drive. You know, but if it was somebody else, you know, they might get a ticket, so...
I'm pretty sure he got a ticket if we seen him.
I'm saying that's the only person I see him use it.
I mean, okay, we can try and see. Hopefully, the alternative, this plan with crosswalks and angled parking can help. And then we always can come back and, you know...
We're really trying to address your concerns. I mean, we're doing the best we can with what we have now.
One question, let's say if this does not pass, will that south end project fall?
You mean the lanes that are existing?
No, the angled parking.
The angled parking?
Veterans Park.
I don't, I mean, as long as council is okay with us trying to do that, I'm fairly confident that Wayne County is going to allow us to do it. So I don't foresee them denying it, especially because we're trying to increase the walkability, we're doing it by park and all the factors here. I'd be stunned if they tell us no.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. So Holbrook to Hamtramck Drive, where if we pull all the system right now, so what damage is going to have? How much is that total?
I would have to get you an exact total, councilman, but it's in, it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we'll have to repay. In addition, we'll be stuck with, well, what do we do with the bike lane at our south end and it just stops? And then there'll be irreparable damage with the Michigan Department of Transportation as far as ever getting more grants.
Okay, so here is the one. The example, we have the Tennessee, Chicago, New York, not even, should be compared with the Hamtramck City. You know, make no sense. Chicago, New York City, the apartment building, there is the 20,000 people. They don't have any parking. They need the bike. So far, I see, I've been driving, I don't see any council member, me and Sumari only, that area. I never see one bike. How, Bill Meyer saw maybe two, I saw the zero bike riding that area. I do that every day, three times minimum. So this is the area, we're not improving the economy, we are destroying the economy. And very clear the one, and more dangerous safety voice than ever. So anyway, Hamtramck Street is 25, it cannot fly the 55. So then again and again, this residence, zero bike. I never saw the councilman calling, "Drive, uh, ride the bike, my life." Okay, so excuse me, sir, I'm just talking, just talking, example, okay? So this resident, 95% don't do the, go the 20 minutes downtown, using the right. So using the bike. So, like example I did it, so let's say somebody, they have already two, three car in the family car. So, so the thing is here, we have to make something what is fit for the city and city residents, not for Chicago, not for the Tennessee. So this city, demographically, population, that don't use any bike. Okay, yeah, kids doing, kids did it the hundred years ago too. Kids is still doing that, don't need the bike. So I remember from Carpenter to, I never see anybody, other side of the Carpenter, anybody going downtown, ride the bike with the lane and the downtown. So here is the one, if we can move Holbrook to the, send the people to the Detroit, send it to the, cross the highway, that way. Completely, I want you to eliminate this whole section without, I'm not going to approve it. It's my vote. I want to come to the modification to completely take off the Holbrook to Hamtramck Drive and directing that section, Holbrook to the Detroit, that route. So, so I want to see the, how much money will be damaging or given to somebody? If it is 200,000, of course, I will approve the 200,000, just example throwing the number, to modify those things because that is the business is killing right there, no question. So I have to listen to the residents. I go every day, three times, two, three, three times. Saturday, I'm all day long, Sunday, I'm all day long, that area, three times. So then I have to hear all those things from the residents.
Councilman, and that's why we want to take immediate remedial action to, you know, get that parking there and get those crosswalks in there because we do believe that will give relief to those businesses.
Only the business, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor, what's up? Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat it again and again, all those things, whatever, we just sharing this. I'm telling from my personal experience, business people, a lot of residents there, they hold me one day, almost two, three hours, they will stand down in front of PNC Bank, maybe four or five bicyclists, so. It is a good weather at the time, not the winter time. So in my opinion, those bike rides, all those are killing our sidewalk, killing our parking space and harm the business also. I don't know how much damage you're going to be, if we remove those things back to the previous, how much damage you can do. Think about it, what we're going to do? Maybe we're going to approve it now and if a large number of the damage come up, maybe we consider it, what we should do, we should do together. But most of the business people, I do not see one person say, "The business is increasing." Everybody has a complaint. And last things, we represent city of Hamtramck. I hope my whole council will agree with me, not even 10% people are biking this area.
The council, the beautiful part about the angled parking and the crosswalks is that even if council does eventually make a determination, we doing this, we having it, we're getting rid of it, the angled parking and the crosswalks will stay. I mean, that's, that will benefit us regardless.
Okay, so I understand your concern, and I understand the justification that you mentioned, that bike line hasn't finished, is not done yet. So that's why we don't see many bikes. But I am also concerned about the consequences of reversing this project from the, you know, Ministry of Transportation or Department of Transportation that they may reject future grants for us. But again, for Holbrook, to be cleared, American Axle requested that so they can do some developments for Holbrook side. And I think, like we mentioned, it already leaked, it's not a secret that they want to invest over 460 something million dollars. So that, that's a big thing for Hamtramck. And one of their requirement is just the bike line there. They want to improve the street and beautify it. I know they take good maintenance on their side, you know, on their buildings and... So we want to get that done for Holbrook side. I don't know about the consequences of reversing the whole project. If it was the first time, I would vote no for it. At this point, it's kind of difficult to just reverse the whole thing. So if you want to try those alternative plans and see if it's going to leave, you know, some pressure on the businesses there, and then we can always come back and just, if no improvement, nothing happened, and they still suffer, we can come back and just take a hard decision and just cancel the whole project later on. I mean, that's my opinion. Like I said, if it was the first time before we start working, I would just say no and that's it, we done. But this is going to have consequences on our city, so it's up to you guys, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Chair? So if you, you saying we start with that and later on we take it off, by that time, we expend the money, they're going to say, "Why are you canceling or destroying the program right now? I want you to pay all those money back," or "I'm not going to give nothing." So that case, if I still want, and there is nothing solid, still, grant money could be existing there and remapping the area, the original idea was to go the Detroit. So that is the way, we can send the Detroit, using the Holbrook, still make the, and we can excel happy and still people going the Detroit. And first up then is the Hamtramck Drive.
So like I said, councilman, the angled parking and the crosswalks would stay indefinitely. I mean, that, even if council decided to do away with the bike lanes, I mean, the angled parking and crosswalks would stay. I mean, that's not something that, that's only going to benefit the businesses over there. So I don't think it's getting ourselves in any deeper with that. I think it's a good... I think it's a, a good attempt to see how it works and see if it helps. It might alleviate them. And everything else moving forward beyond that, we're taking to extreme considerations, the parking. So I mean, the whole Holbrook thing will not affect parking except for nominally, in my opinion. And the same with all the way to getting to Kniff, that's, it's all on the alley. People aren't parking in the alleys, so I mean, it's not going to affect that. If anything, I think going from Holbrook to Kniff might actually be a boost. But we can address that later. Let's do the immediate remedial action with the angled parking and try and get some relief to the businesses over there and see if it helps.
Or, or another alternative, you know, decision that we can do is to let the, you know, the Department of Transportation, whoever is taking care of this or Wayne County, know about the possibility of changing the route of this and see if they approve it without having any consequences. If they say, okay, that's fine to twist it from Holbrook to Chrysler Drive and then go back to, you know, Hamtramck Drive or somewhere, then we move with that. At least we let them know that we did not take a hard decision, we consulted them, and we think it's in the benefit of the businessmen in this district because it limited the space and that we already had a problem with parking in that area. So I, I think that's possible if we can postpone, taking a decision until we consult.
So there's, there's already significant progress in the way of Hamtramck Drive as well. Their intentions are to rip that out and redo it pretty significantly already, which is coming up to us. But I mean, we can take it in steps. Like I said, I, I'm really just looking for the ability right now. I mean, I, at least the acquiescence to try and help those businesses. That's all I really, really want right at this moment.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
I would like to table this until, further notice, until we get numbers of what's going to cost. Also to contact, you know, the DPO, Department of Transportation. And then until you give us those numbers and then council mayor will decide what we're going to do.
Like figure out if there are any consequences.
Yes, so I would like to table this.
It's not really, there's no, you're not voting on anything, so.
As long as discussion.
Just discussion.
So discussion is showing, still you heard from Holbrook, most of the council members, so you really know what's going on, is most of them going to the know. Like councilman Rafael said, so maybe bring something reasonable for us, modification done, do more research, bring to us, then we can approve it. That's all, nothing personal.
Mr. Chair, I'm very much agree with Councilor Rafael, let's table it and we make the decision.
We don't have to table anyway, this is just discussion.
I mean, it's, no decision is taken, so.
That's good.
So go to the next one then.
So.
Move on, move on.
Yeah, well, I mean, the end results or the outcome of this discussion is just to discover, explore, you know, what are the consequences and if it's possible to change the route to, from Holbrook to our Chrysler Drive or somewhere else. And then we. I mean, if we can do without, with no consequences, then I think it's better for our residents and we already have two-thirds of Hamtramck involved to that area, if that's possible. So that, I, I think that's what everybody is trying to say.
So next is the.
All right, so we get to the end of the new businesses and we have the reports. I will have a short report today. I just want to take this opportunity and thank everyone who attended today's meeting. I want to congratulate the newly elected and the re-elected council members. I want to thank everybody who attended the inauguration ceremony. Greg, thank you for all the hard work you did to prepare and organize the meeting. I, I also want to thank every council member here for, you know, solving the problem of the mayor for them tonight, kindly with no, not taking any personal animosity. I mean, I was trying to be fair to everyone and just keep myself away. You, you guys took responsibility and solved it. And I hope that it will not affect our work in the future. Like I said, we, we have been good for the past two years. We spend more time working together, getting things done than being in constant conflict with each other like it used to be in the past. So I thank you all for, you know, being responsible and I wish we can work as a team from now on. I mean, like we have been doing in the past as well. And that's it, I don't have anything else to add. Mayor Potem, today is a bonus, a congratulations. And it's your first report for, for the, for this new position that you are holding.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, and people who came here and the people who watching us in this, in this council chamber and outside of the council chamber. I'm really, really appreciated to people who support me to be in this position and it is not a personal things and I respect the democracy. Who don't vote for me, still I respect you. We are council, we are friend, and I treat you with the, with the friend and respect. You are my colleague and we like to go forward with, together with our great leaders. Our leader, mayor, Amir Kalibz has leadership. And I attend few meetings, a few events last, we have like almost four weeks gaps. Thank you, the people who celebrate Christmas, Happy Christmas, Happy New Year, the people of Hamtramck. And Bangladeshi people, they're celebrating 52 Victory Anniversary on the 16th of December last month. I was inviting and I was arranging some of the event, mayor was invited. He cannot make this the first time, always with those event. And thank you newly elected, all those council member, especially new council member, Muhtazin Sathman. Congratulations to be here and congratulations on your new married life, constitutional life. I hope you will be happy in your constitutional life. And the people of Hamtramck, again, I'm telling you, this is the position. We work together and work with, on behalf of our honourable mayor, Amir Kalibz, leadership. Thank you, special thank you for Muhtazin Sathman, who proposed me a mayor project. My special thanks goes to my colleague, all those colleagues, especially Sumari. I told people, Sumari the man for commitment, and he did the commitment. And I thank you for my good friend, Kali Rafael. You are equal for each and everyone, you prove it. And thanks, mayor, you do not want to take the part, God save you.
Thank you.
You don't need to take the part, but thank you, my school friend, good friend, my beloved friend, Mith Mohammed. I take it in the politics, I take it in the democracy process. And thank you, my long-time colleague, I work with you 10 years this council, councilman Kambo Hassan. Maybe one day we'll work, go way further, work together to make this city, make this place better. Thank you very much to give me the opportunity and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We will work together to make the city with this council. Thank you, Hamanist.
Thank you so much. You realize that dinner is on you tonight.
That's good.
To celebrate your life.
Thank you, with everybody.
Everybody's enjoying.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem. And now we move to the city council report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilor Rafael?
I want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight. I want to thank our team for this presentation, it's not personal. It's just we're, you know, we get a lot of hate, complaints and, you know, from those side of town regarding these bike lanes since I became council, even previously, but now council, like emails and calls. I want to wish our chief a, a great retirement, you and your husband go around the world as much as you can. I wish you all the best, thank you for your service for, for, I think, what, how many years now?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. Wish you all the best. You know, I want to congratulate my colleague, Sathman, on his, you know, new seat here in city council. And also he's, he got married about a month ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
So I congratulate, so. And then I want to wish all the best to my other colleagues who won in the election, Mohammed Hassan, also Mohammed Sumari. You know, have a good night and God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank everyone who joined us tonight, thank you, council, and thank you all the people of Hamtramck who chose me to serve you. I want to make Hamtramck a better place for all of us. Just keep, give me your prayers, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. All right, I guess with that, we come to the end of the meeting and we need, no, I'm sorry. The end of the reports. And do we have any report for the controller?
They're posted on the board.
Yeah.
All right, so we move back to the public comment if there are any.
If there are any public commenters.
Bill.
It's Bill Meyer.
Ten seconds. Oh, that's it.
All right, so what a shock, I'm sorry to hear that Ann, Marcia's leaving. You've done a great job and you've really changed the department in a good way. And you're so humble about it. I mean, she should have told us ahead of time, we'd have a big party for you. Thank you for your work. Some of the signs are still left up in the city from the campaigning in November, by the way. And by Kniff and the freeway. So I, I think you came up with a great solution. I mean, that's what I would have done, I appreciate the talk and everybody's work and got some young people really ambitious, wanting to help the city. That's a great, great program they put together, great presentation. I disagreed with a lot of what they said, but I know they have a job and they have to try to sell it. It remind me of salesman, I try to sell something. I just don't know why they feel they have to sell something when mostly people in the city do not want this. You should really go to the people first. They should have, not you, but I mean, the last guys who voted for this should have gone to the people in the city. I think you asked the people, 80% would not want those bike lanes. So we made a big mistake at the beginning, now they're trying to do their job. However, when you present stuff like that, you don't talk about the negatives about it. You talk about all the cities that have benefited, how it worked and all. You don't talk about the hundreds of cities that went down, that failed because of this. You don't hear the negative parts at all. He said it'll provide economic improvement, well, you need specifics, how is it going to be? You know, just can't say that, you got to give a list of how it's going to improve the, the economy in the city. So what do we lose? We lost parking spaces with this program. We also lost these people that are working hard and we're paying them, you know, to do this job. So we're losing salary on there, spending their time on something that the city doesn't want. And we should put them on work that, that will help the city, that will, that the people want.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
One more minute. Okay, I love bicycles, I ride bicycles, I have nothing against bikes, they're very healthy. Everything you said about bikes is true, I mean, very, very healthy, very important. This city isn't a bike city, that's all, let's face it. Once it becomes one, then run the bikes through here, but it's not ready for that yet. What I'd like to see is a bike trail going around the city, to be honest, so that we can drive our bikes all through the different regions of the city. That's what we need, is connect the people in the city first and there's no bike trails. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Swain.
All right, thank you. So with that, we come to the end of the public comments and we move to our gentleman.
I motion second.
All right, it's 9:30, thank you.